Good afternoon, welcome back colleagues. We're back from recess. We are resuming second reading folder. We are now on bill number 205-36 LS. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill 205 LS into the third reading file and would like to discuss it.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Buenas, Madam Speaker and my fellow colleagues. Bill number 205-36 LS as introduced by myself, which is an act to add a new subsection eight to section 15401A of Article 4, Chapter 5, Title 4 Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Ethics Commission to retain legal service. Madam Speaker, earlier in this term, this gave, this body gave full autonomy to the Guam Ethics Commission. That was bill 85, and all voted to carry out the mandates and the receipt, receipt and processing of complaints, investigating determining ethics violations by individuals who serve our people. In the span of a few months, they have moved forward and realized the importance of acquiring legal services to properly vet complaints of ethical misconduct of public officials in accordance with local laws. Currently, the Office of the Attorney General is responsible for representing the commission, and this representation will cause a conflict of interest. The new subsection we are looking to is to add, is specific to allowing the commission to retain legal services by an independent counsel. The passage of this bill is essential as it will continue to promote transparency, accountability, and good governance within our island. I look forward to discussion on bill 205, and I humbly ask for the support of my colleagues to authorize the commission to retain legal services in support of its operation and hearing, and adjudicating such complaint against officials who violate the ethical code of conduct. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On bill number 205-36, is there any member who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to ask Senator Sinagastin, you know, we're authorizing them, of course, to be able to get an attorney on board, and certainly understand the logic of that, but how is it going to be addressed under their existing funding that they have that's been appropriated?
Senator Brown, please address the presiding officer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't normally look at the presiding officer. Sometimes the presiding officer doesn't look at us when we're speaking, so apologize for that, Madam Speaker. I'm normally talking to the wall.
I'm not, I'm pointing out the rules.
No, I appreciate it. I'm just pointing out, there's many times I'm here and the speaker's looking elsewhere, not necessarily you, but I just wanted to inquire with regards to, are they going to be taking money out of their existing budget to cover the cost? Do they have the money available to do that? That's my question.
Will the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and the answer is yes. It's within their budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. On bill number 205-36, is there any other member who'd like to be recognized? On bill number 205? If not, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And because the, unless there's an objection, I'd like to, being that bill 85 that gave the full autonomy to the Ethics Commission, the law that was passed, if we can add all my colleagues to that, to this bill, so they can retain their, their legal, unless there's an objection to that.
To add all colleagues?
As co-sponsors.
Okay. On the motion to add all colleagues as co-sponsors, is there any objection? Hearing, no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And with that, I just ask for full support when the bill comes to the floor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place bills number 205-36 LS on the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number 210-36 COR. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill 21, 210-36 COR to the third reading file and like to discuss the bill.
Could you please clarify your motion? Is that the bill as amended by the committee?
That's correct. As amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council, Public Affairs, and introduced by myself.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill 210-36 COR, as amended by the committee, is an act to amend section 790606 of Article 6 of Chapter 79, Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to approving the plan for the Guam Pacific Island Gold Star Memorial Monument. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank you and my colleagues for honoring the Gold Star families when we passed bill 184 in September, authorizing the use of Skinner Plaza for the construction of the monument. Today, I stand before you asking for your support to pass bill 210, which would formally accept the plans reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Sa, Public Works as required by public law 36-55. This is the final step before construction may officially begin by the military order of the Purple Heart and the Gold Star Families Memorial Planning Team. Once unveiled, unveiled, the people of Guam will see a beautiful monument that honors our Gold Star families and offers a place of remembrance of their sons and daughters who made the ultimate sacrifice and service of our island and country. I humbly ask for your support on this approval, so we may finally bring closure to this and restore honor and dignity to our grieving families. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator. Is there any one of our members who'd like to be recognized on bill number 210-36 COR? Senator Duennius, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I rise, of course, in full support of 210-36. I know yourself and others, I wasn't able to attend, but did attend the ceremonial groundbreaking several weeks ago. And understandably, I want to thank the author and the chairman, Senator Sinagastin, for being so gracious and facilitating that, knowing that there was one more step to be done. Maybe yourself, Madam Speaker, and other members of this body, I know, received numerous calls and maybe a few emails with regard to thinking that with the passage of the prior bill, that things were ready to go. But this one more step is required and needed, and I thank the author for moving quickly on this bill. I know that when it passes, Madam Speaker, there's going to be a lot of relief in the committee that worked really, really hard to put together this very, very excellent memorial planned. I know we've been through all of that discussion in the last bill that passed as a public law establishing the monument as it's going to go up, but I just wanted to say that this final step is going to bring a lot of relief. And I wanted to speak on this particularly, Madam Speaker, because many, a couple of members who testified during the public hearing on this bill 210 discussed that their excitement now is to hopefully, after the passage of this bill, and there are contractors that are donating their time and their efforts, and they're ready to really move as quickly as possible on, on, you know, preparing the grounds, but that they're, they're really invigorated and excited now to hopefully unveil this on Liberation Day. And I think that it would be amazing if that were to be possible, simply because of the commemoration of Liberation Day and what it means, of course, to our people, and what it means to honor those who have sacrificed, and in particular, we would be honoring those who gave the ultimate sacrifice and the very purpose for which the Gold Star Monument is something that has become notorious throughout the contiguous United States of America, honoring those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Once again, just to note, Mr. Woody, who is very, very famous for this, is going to try to be here. You know, it just, once again, I don't think we can say his words too many times when he was asked, you know, and called a hero. He said, "I am not a hero. The heroes are those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Those are the ones who we have to be eternally grateful for." And so, Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in full support, and once again, cannot continue to thank the chairman enough for moving this quickly forward, and hopefully that, that dream and that wish comes true of actually unveiling this Gold Star Monument on Liberation Day on July, of course, 21st, 2022. And hopefully, we'll be out of emergency. We'll have a parade, we'll have all of our people doing the normal festivities down there, and one added beautiful opportunity will be to walk by this wonderful monument and pay our respects, as it's, will be co-located also by the Purple Heart. I know many of us know that Purple Heart recipients and their families, they always go early in the morning and make sure they're there before the parade next to that monument, and what an honor it would be. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, to rise in full support of bill 210-36. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On bill 210-36, Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of 210. I think it's going to be quite a day when we actually see the completion of this monument, and certainly as Senator Duennius and Senator Sinagastin have relayed, you know, it's been a long time in coming, and I know a lot of effort and time has been put into bringing us to where we are today, and we're really just having to do the final step, really, in authorizing the actual design of this particular monument. I did want to ask of the main sponsor if I could be a co-sponsor to this particular bill. Certainly, every family on Guam that has lost a member of their family who was killed in action, you know, it's a pain you never want to experience, and certainly, we would not see in the future wanting to have other families go through this, but to have some place where we can all go, to find solace, to find peace, to remember, to reminisce, to share, I think it's going to be a wonderful contribution to our community and something that's certainly going to add to the value of Skinner Plaza. So if the main sponsor has no objection, I would very much like to be a co-sponsor to this bill and very much stand in support of it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On bill 210, Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this legislation. My office received a call from Tim with regards to trying to push this, this bill through in, in the last stage of their plan, which was very well put together, by the way. If you saw the timelines, they were always on time, their, even their fundraisers, they put together the runs that they had, the bike riding events they had to raise funding was, everything was so well methodically thought out, and I have to commend those all involved in, in the making of this memorial, putting it up for the, for the Gold Star families. However, there was a question when, with regards to the square footage, I believe it was from 20 feet to 25 feet, and it was a change in that. So could I ask the author of the legislation on, what was the status of it? Because this amended bill strikes that completely out, and what is now the square footage that there will be using in this area that was first implemented?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. The, the reason why we struck it out, because they called us and they said, "We don't need any extra feet, we'll work with what the original bill is." And I said, "Oh, fine." So then we moved on with that, and the goal was just to get this passed, and they said they're, they're ready to go with the exact footage they got. They, they wanted first five additional feet, and then they changed their minds and, "Never mind, we'll work with the 20." I said, "Fine. I'm here to help the Gold Star family."
Senator Taitegui.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I thought that's what was reiterated to us in the, at my office. However, one other question, the plans that are being submitted, is it staying within the 20 feet or the 25 feet in the plans itself? That's a question.
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. As a matter of fact, if you look at the attachments, it identifies all the 20 feet. So it's, it's within the, the, the design they wanted, it identified the 20 feet. So everything's still consistent with what we started with.
Okay. Senator Taitegui. Yes, thank you so much for that. You know, also wanted to, not only recognize Tim for his hard work, but the people behind this whole Gold Star Family Memorial Monument being put together by the other people like Dyrin Cruz, who is part of this group, and there's several others. I don't have all their names, but I just want to thank them so much, you know, for all they're doing to ensure that we remember those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And I too ask Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, if the author of this legislation would please include me as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. On bill 210-36, is there any other member who'd like to be recognized? Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. Madam Speaker, this, this memorial is honoring the Gold Star families. It is honoring the families who have stayed behind while our soldiers, our airmen went to war, honoring the families that endured the, the unknowns of the controversy or the battles that, that their brother, sister, husband, wife have faced. And, you know, this is a small token for what they have lost, for the sacrifices that they had to endure, losing a loved one in battle. In many instances, you don't come back. And in many instances, that you have a closed casket. And, and as a family member, it's very difficult to have this kind of closure when you're not able to see your loved one, not able to know definitely that, is that them, in the times of the, the funeral ceremonies that we do here on our island. And so, I, I thank the, the foundation that has worked to promote this nationally, to acknowledging our Gold Star families on this scale. And the beauty of it, Madam Speaker, is it's, it's a unified effort, meaning the design, the, the intent, the mission, and the vision is all the same. It's exact, and that's exactly how it should be. That I know that when I go to California or another state, that when I go there, there's going to be a Gold Star Monument very similar to the one here on Guam. And we are all honoring the families who have lost their loved ones in their sec, in, who paid the ultimate sacrifice, and we cannot replace their lives, we, we cannot replace the lives of the ones we lost through this memorial, but this is a small token acknowledging that the families are not alone in their suffering and in their loss. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. On bill number 210-36 COR, is there any other member who'd like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to ask that we first amend, amend to add, all my colleagues, we all stood together when we passed the original bill, and I know we all stand together today to support the Gold Star and its final step in getting the monument. So to ask that all my colleagues be added as co-sponsors to the bill, Madam Speaker.
Is there a particular order?
We just, Senator Nelson, then Senator Brown, Senator Tello, Senator Chris, and then we just run the flow.
All right. On that motion, clerks, on that motion, is there any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, motion carries. Senator Sinagastin.
And, and that's all, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
All right. On the motion to place bill 210-36 COR on the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number 66-36 COR. We will take a one-minute recess and, and move into the committee of the whole pursuant to our standing rules. One-minute recess.[1282.15]
Good afternoon colleagues and to the people of Guam, the committee on of the whole is called to order. Materials for the committee of the whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder label twelve point seven point twenty-one committee of the whole. Close amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email thirty-six G L session at gmail dot com amendments not in writing will not will be called out of order. Rules of engagement, my colleagues, there'll be three rounds for discussion. We will have two rounds for questions for the panel. With each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including response. So in other words, when you ask a question, if it takes ten seconds, then that's always counted through your five minutes, ten seconds, okay? Time to speak may not be used from from more than one member to another. A member who used that member's time on the question, use all that member's time on that question and may not later speak. Even if all the time muted was not used, as found on our standing rules section one point zero two D three. At the completion of this of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill for discussion. Round three is for amendments or comments on the bill being discussed. After we complete the amendments in the bill, I will allow the sponsor to close and I will enter the emotion of the of the recommendation of the committee of the whole and then we will proceed to the next bill. After you complete the discussion of the bills, which we have a total of five, then I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole. At which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the committee of the whole. We will begin with bill. I'll first introduce the panel. We have Ms. Mel Mendola from the Gita. We have the G V B. I'm gonna mess up your name if you can. You just.
Nico Fujikawa.
Nico Fujikawa, okay. We do have Ms. Daphne Simzou that's in route, but I prefer we begin now. So at least the the folks that are here in the panel can at least speak about the bill. And then we can move from there. I know there was a question asked earlier about fiscal note. It's part of the committee report. A request to be granted a waiver. The committee that handled this was under the under Gita committee oversight. So that was taken care of and it was because of the post amendment is an administrative nature will not physically impact the appropriation of F I twenty twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. So we'll get to see what's gonna happen. But when Daphne, when Ms. Simzou shows up, she can explain what the possible impact could be. Then we'll know the impact in twenty twenty-two. Madam Speaker.
Yes, I would just object to that that there is no fiscal note because while it may have been administrative in nature when it was first introduced because the bill only extended a deadline and still contemplated the same number of Q Cs to be granted. The bill, as we're looking at today, as amended by the committee is very different. This bill now includes a different percentage of the renovation, you know, a different field of eligible participants under this Q C program.
Yes ma'am.
I would argue that there is a fiscal impact. I looked at the original law to see what the fiscal impact was predicted back then. And unfortunately, at that time, BBMR did not submit one. So the committee was forced to waive it in order to move forward the bill. So we've really never seen an estimated fiscal impact from this Q C program.
All right. And I think through the discussion today, then it may be proper to request for a fiscal note. But we need to hear first from the panel, what's on the horizon.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Did you? I couldn't hear you.
I I mentioned that after the discussion today, can you hear me clearly? Okay.
Just bring the microphone close to you because the muffle of the masks, sorry. I'm okay. Thank you. Could you please repeat exactly what you said on the.
What I said was after the discussion today, there may be grounds to request for a fiscal note because things have changed since when the bill was first introduced. There's no doubt about that. There's many things that have changed even in the hotel industries. They're doing all kinds of construction going on down there. And I think I believe the the panel today are ready to speak to that. So it may cost the request for a fiscal note from BBMR. Then we'll decide then how far we go with this bill. All right. Senator Tella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for that explanation. However, Mr. Chair, I think, isn't there anything in the standing rules saying that in order for us to even hear even an appropriation or any kind of bill that affects the impact, financial impacts of the government Guam, that they can't move forward unless we have a fiscal note before entertaining it on the session floor?
That may be possible, but that that wasn't done by the appropriation. This was handled by the another committee. I'm just sitting in for as the chair. And the waiver was granted. So we'll just move forward. Like I said, once we've discussed what we need to discuss and hear additional information, it may just change the whole concept. And then we'll find that out from the sponsor himself. He may want to relook his bill. But I prefer we listen and we hear what Gita has to say, what G V B has to say, and as soon as D R T shows up, we'll find out exactly what could be the impact. Then we need to really take a look at the fiscal note, ask for a fiscal note.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to request that BBMR also be available for us to ask questions as well. I know that you mentioned something they would not be able to be here until Thursday.
Right. Department Administration won't be available until Thursday. BBMR is not available. I'm trying to communicate and see who's available. The director's not here. Neither directors are here. But Thursday, Mr. Burns should be on island. And then we can move from there because we do still have three other, four other bills for committee of the whole. So we go ahead and start this one. All right, Senator.
Okay, I just want to state for the record, I'm very uncomfortable moving forward without this fiscal note, Mr. Chair. I think that the rules and regs are put into place, especially for something is, you know, gonna impact the our government coffers. So I appreciate it, Mr. Chair, if we reconsider and either we wait until BBMR to come in to speak on it or or seek legal opinion. But you know, that's I'm stating my concerns.
Okay, as a matter of fact, since you're asking the seek legal, I will pause for less than a minute and we'll wrap this up real quick. Okay, the committee of holes called back to order. We'll just continue on. And like I stated earlier, after what is discussed today? And it's determined that a fiscal note is more appropriate that we get because what has been revealed? Then we'll move from there and we can also stop the committee of the whole on that. But let's first find out what's going on because I'm not familiar yet what information they're gonna provide and I'd rather not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think we're just setting precedents here. So in the future, if something like this happens again, then we've just set precedence.
Not a problem. I'm sixty-four. Plenty of precedents to start. All right, moving along. Senator Moynihan. Oh, before that, I'd like to first have the panel currently being sworn in. Sergeant Arms, if you can please swear in the the panels and if you please rise.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God. Mr. Chair, on the oath, you may proceed.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. And I'd ask the author of the bill, Senator Moynihan, if you can please give your opening statement and then we will proceed with before you continue after you're done. I'd ask and before we start the round, I will ask the panel to first present what's going on on the island and how they feel about the Q C, the possible implementation of this of your proposal. All right, Senator Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And like Gulliver Newton John said in her song, "Let's Get Physical," but that's another term. But but what we're, I just like to say, I appreciate my colleagues concerned of fiscal note. However, I think what's really a good example of how well these Q C have have done for the island so far is by looking around before we had this pandemic. Where our island was heading, how our general fund was looking and all the money we had coming on in. And hoping that this bill moves forward from the good questionings and the assistance of our panel here. We get past this pandemic, we'll probably be at that same position, if not even better. So I think the future looks bright by affording the opportunity with such bills like this. Mr. Chairman, Bill sixty-six is an economic-driven piece of legislation, which we need now more than ever. And this legislation is not about big business. It's not about big tax breaks or even about giving away the kitchen sink. Rather, this legislation is about creating economic activity through construction. And in this case, through the construction of new hotels, hotel rooms and or the renovation of existing ones. Mr. Chair, this measure was first introduced to extend the timelines of a special hotel qualifying certificate program, which was intended to expand Guam's hotel room inventory by sixteen hundred rooms. That would have really helped our economics on Guam. And after several years of being in the books, the program generated nearly four hundred new hotel rooms. And prior to the pandemic, was brought to create hundreds of new jobs with construction of the Subaki Towers. And then over the years, the island faced many challenges like we always do. Especially this one regarded manpower shortages, H two B issues, which prevented special program from achieving its desire objective. And thus, the intent to expand the timelines was necessary. However, in the process of the introduction and the extensive discussion with stakeholders, including Guam Economic Development Authority, the program is being proposed for a modification. And the measure is not just about new hotel constructions, but about encouraging the renovations of existing hotel rooms to not just expand Guam's inventory of hotel rooms, but also improve the quality of the product being provided. And I appreciate Nico here from G V B to further explain that when we get to the discussion part and how our tourism will be coming back. Our rival numbers will be back to pre-two thousand nineteen numbers. Maybe not in two thousand twenty-two and possibly not in two thousand twenty-three, but hopefully two thousand twenty-four. So the point, the point is really simple. Now is the time to boost our tourist industry by creating incentives to attract investors. That's why Gita is pushing this. To build new hotels, to renovate existing ones, and even purchase dilapidated ones with the intent to building something nice. Every new hotel or every upgraded hotel will create new jobs. It will create new opportunities and it will attract tourists in the near future. And so talking to stakeholders, they'll, they believe it's now is the time to invest. However, with the rising cost of materials and challenges with labor, we need to establish incentives to encourage these investments. Colleagues, this program, this program is not the traditional Q C program, which gave away a hundred percent rebates. It's not. When it comes to new hotel construction, the rebates and abatments equate to ten percent of the total construction cost. And these incentives are spread over a period and in some cases, as long as twenty years. That's the impact. To minimize the impact on the government collections. With hotel renovations, the program will provide rebates and abatments of twenty percent of the total construction cost, which also can be spread over a period. Also, it should be noted that it's not just renovation qualifies for, not just any renovation qualify for the program, but investment has to be at least ten percent of the total cost of the property value. That means if the hotel is worth three hundred million dollars and they want to avail it to this incentive, they would have to renegotiate costs at least thirty million dollars along to to make this program happen. So, Mr. Chair, I'm really excited. I hope my colleagues can listen to what our our panel has to say and ask all your important questions. And I'm sure you'll feel that it'd be great to get started on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, panel.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Oh, now I ask the panel, we'll begin with whichever whoever would like to start. Ladies first, all right? Thank you, Ms. Mendiola.
How are doing? Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and our members of the legislature. My name is Mel Mendiola and I'm the administrator and CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. We'd like to thank Senator Moynihan and co-sponsor Senator Tina Munya Barnes for for putting this bill together and introducing it and getting us to the point we are today. As you all know, the job of Gita is to stimulate investment in our island. Through investment in our island, our economy is built, jobs are created, and the lives of our people are are made better. But I did want to share something. I know that we already had the the hearing for this and I believe we did already one round of committee of the whole. So I, after that, I did a little bit of homework and I started to, in all cases, it's important to look at what's going on in the competitive environment in in tourism. I wanted to look abroad and see what our peers are doing. So I looked at Hawaii, I looked at Malaysia, and I looked at Thailand. And I wanted to to share that in relation to the pandemic, there are countries, there are destinations, competitor destinations to Guam that are offering similar tax incentives specific to renovation and improvement of hotels. And I share that with you all, and I can certainly discuss more about what these different jurisdictions are doing. But I share that with you all because for for the role of Gita, what we are doing what we are doing is we're competing with other destinations for investment dollars. And what we do is we try to make Guam the best place to invest. And how do we do that? One of the ways to do that is through a tax incentive. And this, the special hotel QC was not an idea of, that's something that we created this year. It was something that was created under the previous administration, under Governor Calvo, with actual numbers behind it as far as the number of hotel rooms we were short. And through reasons having nothing to do with the government of Guam, through H2B visa shortages primarily and not allowing H2B visa holders to come in, that was one of the key things that delayed the construction of new hotels. We had, we have potential applications that amount to two thousand or so rooms. And the applications in various stages of the process of applying for a special hotel QC. We believe this is a worthwhile program, one that we're willing to work on. But your job as legislators is to determine, does the return on investment, does the return exceed the investment? And the investment, of course, being what you're giving up in the form of tax revenue today. Which is exactly why we believe that this is a very good time for a QC like this that does involve renovation as one of the benefits. And the reason is because there are no visitors at the, our visitors industry right now is depressed. It continues to be depressed. And while visitors are anticipated to come back, this is a great time for hotels to take their rooms offline is when there are no customers. And most hotels, they don't take their, some hotels take their entire property offline, as you see down in Tuman with the Fiesta Resort. Others do it wing by wing, phase by phase, as you see with many of our other hotels. But overall, it leads to a better tourism, a better experience, a higher margin tourist, a higher spending tourist. And that's something that I think we can all agree, not only impacts positively the BPT, but also the hotel occupancy tax. And so I do, I do sincerely believe that this is, that a bill like this is important. A bill like this is important for dialogue and discussion amongst yourselves as to deciding what is the best return on investment for the people of Guam in this particular industry. You're absolutely right. I mean, one of the things that we said earlier was we're here to decide if tourism is, is it tourism that we're going to give tax incentives to? Or is it aquaculture or agriculture or any other industry? And that's not an easy job. And this is your job. And my job is to say, all of it, give, do it all. Let's do it all. That's my job. But of course, my colleagues' jobs over at BBMR, RevTax and Department of Administration are to say, this is the impact and this is how we balance it. So you don't have an easy job ahead of you. But I do think that past performance oftentimes is an indicator of future performance. And the past performance of Guam in the area of tourism, I don't think anyone can deny, is that tourism is a large piece of our economy and a large part of our government and a large part of our, a large contribution to the lives of our people. And so given that, we encourage this legislation and we encourage, we encourage your questions and we open dialogue and discussion to come up with the best solution that you feel comfortable with for the people of Guam and that will continue to build on our existing tourism industry for the future. Thank you.
Now for GVB's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Hafiday, good afternoon, everybody. I'll make this rather quick. We are obviously in support of the intent of this bill, especially, particularly with renovation. A lot of the hotels, you know, the market has a way of correcting itself. And I'm sure you've seen, the biggest one is the Crown Plaza, formerly the Fiesta Resort, has taken its entire property offline to renovate over three hundred and nineteen new rooms for the island. And so in terms of renovation, this is key for us, especially at GVB. As Mel mentioned, we will be competing, once borders start opening up again, for these markets. There is a lot of pent-up demand in-country and everyone is looking for the highest quality in terms of safety, in terms of amenities and upgrading. So I think at the end of the day, you know, we really want to be able to market Guam as a destination of choice, particularly because we've reinvested back into our product. And of course, the hotels and our lodging is some of the first things that our visitors experience and see. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shemuzu is supposedly less than two blocks away. Unless, if my colleagues would, would have no reservation, we'll recess for a few more minutes, at least five minutes. Give her time to come in so she can tell us what the fiscal impact could be. Because she's the revenue and tax person. All right?
The committee of the whole is called back to order. I'd like to recognize that Ms. Daphne Shimsu is present now, the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And I'd have the Sergeant Arms to please swear her in if you can please rise Ms. Shimsu.
Please raise your hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Mr. Chair, she's under oath. You may proceed.
Thank you Sergeant Arms. Ms. Shimsu, just to advise you, the panel, Ms. Menjola and Nico, had testified about the, generally the impact of this bill. So I'm going to ask you to give your, your perspective of the bill, before we move on to any questions that may be posed to the panels. Ms. Shimsu, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to Bill 66 through 36, and I just had a quick, I was able to quickly review it. The, as I mentioned, to the extent that this applies to existing, existing renovations, you know, of course, there may be an impact to existing BBT revenues. And again, that is something that I don't have the information on in terms of how much the impact would be. And of course, with regards to any new, any new businesses that would avail of this special hotel QC, you know, again, that would not impact because again, those are new hotels. But it's the, I think in the area of existing renovations, that's the one area we don't have that information for right now.
All right, thank you. Senator Moynihan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Daphne, for the additional information. And also, Mr. Chair, in addition to discussion with my colleagues, I'd like to, just for now, to put 66 aside here briefly while I work on amendments to the bill. And we can move forward with the rest of the agenda. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. There are no objections. We are going to set aside Bill 66, that's 36 C O R. You have, you're going to be introducing an amendment or substitute to that bill?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And we will move on to Bill 170, that's 36 L S. But I'd like to inform my colleagues. I spoke to the author of the bill, and I advised him that we're going to have another hearing on his bill. And he asked that, yes, go ahead and send it back to committee. And unless there's an objection, Bill 170, that's 36 L S will be sent back to committee. We're going to have another hearing on this to identify another source of funding. That being said... That being said, I'm going to gabble down for 66, we're going to set aside, all right? Now, Bill 170, that's 36, unless there's an objection, it's being sent back to committee, it's coming back to my office. Unless there's no objection, I'm going to gabble down on that. Thank you. Now, we will move to Bill 204, that's 36, LS, and I'd like to first thank the panel that are here today, Ms. Minjola, Nico, I don't know about Ms. Shimsu, she might have to stick around, but I ask you to, thank you for being here today, and we'll ask you to come back, Ms. Minjola, for the other bill that will be coming up probably Thursday or Friday, all right? But for Ms. Shimsu, you be excused, and then we'll know on this next bill if you need to come back in, all right? That being said, we'll take a quick, two-minute recess just so the folks can leave, and the new panel can come in. Thank you. The Committee of the Whole is called back to order. My colleagues, we are now on Bill 204, that's 36, LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and Housing, an act to add Article 16 to Chapter 22, Title V, Guam Code Antedote, relative to establishing an opioid recovery trust fund to direct all opioid litigation monies entitled to Guam to such a fund, and to establish the Opioid Recovery Advisory Council, to be known as the Opioid Prevention and Treatment Act. I now call upon the panel guests, which we have is Ms. Shannon Titon and Joseph Perez from the Attorney General's Office, and Ms. Duellen Terly from the Office of Finance and Budget, to please rise as you're being sworn in by the Sergeant Arms.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you all affirm that any and all information they provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Yes, Mr. Chair, you're under oath. You may proceed.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. I'd ask now Senator Shelton, the author of the bill, to please give her opening statement. And my colleagues, before we go around in questions, I'll have the panel from the Attorney General's Office to speak about the, what's going on with the litigation, all right? Senator Shelton?
Sadhus Masi, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for chairing this Committee of the Whole. For years, the opioid epidemic has disrupted communities across the nation, and on average, 115 Americans die each day to an opioid overdose, and two-thirds of all drug overdoses in the United States involve an opioid. In 2016, the number of overdose deaths involving opioids was five times higher than in 1999, and the abuse of prescription opioid drugs are the driving factor. Two years ago, Attorney General of Guam, Levin Camacho, joined AGs across the country to successfully organize an extensive multi-jurisdiction lawsuit against companies that have contributed to the epidemic through unlawful business practices and misrepresentation of the dangers of opioids. Their work has resulted in settlements from pharmaceutical entities totaling approximately $26 billion for their roles in the nationwide crisis, and upwards of $10 million of that amount is anticipated to be awarded to Guam over the next few years. This is the largest non-tobacco settlement the island has ever received. Working together with the Attorney General's Office, I've introduced this bill with the aim of righting the wrongs opioid misuse has caused on our island community. It's more important than ever to treat substance abuse disorders and prevent any future harm to Guam's families. Many states have already enacted allocation measures to spend their anticipated opioid settlement funds, and it's my hope that Guam can join them in being proactive. According to the Department of Health and Human Services, last year, 70,000 people died from opioid overdose, and 1.6 million had an opioid use disorder in the United States. A total of 843,000 drug overdose deaths have occurred since 1999, two-thirds of which were due to opioids. These worrying statistics spell a need for this measure. It's my intention that the settlement funds will be able to deliver help to those in need. The Opioid Prevention and Treatment Act represents an effort to ensure the proper use of Guam's anticipated portion of national opioid case settlements. The question before us now is how will we administer these funds to help individuals and families terribly impacted by substance abuse in our communities? Bill 204 seeks to proactively ensure that settlement dollars are spent repairing the harm done by the opioid crisis on our island. Specifically, the bill does four things. First, it creates the Opioid Recovery Trust Fund to receive all monies obtained through opioid litigation. Two, it dedicates the monies deposited in the fund for use in facilitating and expanding Guam's substance use disorder prevention and treatment efforts, in line with relevant judgments, court orders, and agreements. Three, it establishes an opioid recovery advisory council consisting of government partners, community stakeholders, and individuals with firsthand knowledge of these effects of the opioid crisis, to set a spending strategy based on identifiable needs, and to consult and advise on adaptations to said strategy based on changing community needs. And lastly, it designates the Office of the Attorney General as the single agency to bring claims regarding opioids against entities to ensure that Guam receives 100% of the settlement proceeds available to the island. Bill 204 positions Guam to effectively prevent and reduce opioid abuse, reduce overdose deaths, and mitigate the problems arising as a result of the opioid epidemic. The creation of the Opioid Recovery Trust Fund, the dedication of these settlement monies, and the establishment of the Opioid Recovery Advisory Council are important steps toward providing support to our people terribly impacted by this crisis. Bill 204 dedicates these funds for their intended purpose, to treat and prevent opioid use and co-occurring substance abuse disorders or mental health conditions, because as we have learned, patients seeking services from our recovery network do not only come in with opioid abuse. These funds will help to treat our people in a holistic way, taking into account their circumstances and not placing them into boxes. I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, as well as all my cosponsors of this measure, Senator Talina Nelson, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senators Mary Camacho Torres, Clinton Rigel, James Moynihan, Joe Sinagustin, yourself, Jose Pito Terlachy, and Christopher Duennius. And, Mr. Chair, I ask my colleagues for their support, and thank the panel for being here to answer our questions today.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. I'll now ask the panel from the Attorney General's Office, Ms. Titon and Mr. Perez, to please tell us about what's going on in the litigation, and, and there, I know you've testified in the hearing of your support, but maybe you would enlighten the, my colleagues of exactly the support you would need, and the people of Guam will be able to cherish in being able to help the people of Guam. Thank you. Ms. Titon or Mr. Perez, either one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can start, and then Mr. Perez can fill in anything that I may have left out. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Senator Shelton. We worked with your office in, in developing this legislation, which is a result of a multi-district lawsuit that has now culminated in settlements with the, in this case, the distributors. I believe the lawsuit with Purdue is in bankruptcy court, but this would also assist in, once that, that litigation is, has concluded, this measure would help facilitate how those funds would be spent. Again, we worked with Senator Shelton and other attorneys general offices in developing, in coming up with the appropriate measure on how to spend these funds. And so, we, in consultation with other offices and identifying different jurisdictions, we were able to draft something with Senator Shelton's office using similar legislation from other jurisdictions to... to tailor it for Guam. This legislation is important because it includes the stakeholders and how best to determine just how these funds should be spent based on the settlement agreement, what type of services would be needed, and other measures that could be funded to abate and rehabilitate and treat this substance abuse on the island. I'm not sure if Assistant Attorney General Perez has anything else to add.
And in addition to Ms. Titon's statements, this has been worked through all the states and jurisdictions in the United States. Opioid addiction has affected every single state. This is an addiction that doesn't just involve opioids, but it leads into other types of drugs and other types of addictive behavior. So to actually have these companies, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the manufacturers, Purdue, come to the table to give a settlement onto all the states, and it just shows the necessity and also the harm, the continual harm that the opioid epidemic causes, not just in our nation, but here on Guam as well. So it's with tireless effort from all the jurisdictions, and especially at the Attorney General's Office and the Consumer Protection Division, that this settlement has come across to this point. And I would like to thank the senators again for their support in this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Titon and Mr. Perez. Maybe we'll begin with, we'll start with you.
Could they please explain the settlement?
Okay.
Is there an agreement? Can we get a copy of that? How much money are we expecting and when? All of those details, so that we don't have to keep asking all those questions.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we could certainly provide the legislature with a copy of the settlement. What we anticipate for Guam is $10 million over the next 18 years. So this structure that is laid out in the legislation would help facilitate the expenditure of these funds by putting it in a trust and setting up an advisory council to make sure that these funds are expended as laid out in the settlement agreement.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and start, and I'll come back to you. Or would you like to start?
I'd ask that we get a copy, Mr. Chair. And if they could be more specific, $10 million over 18 years, how exactly is that going to come in?
All right, do you guys have a copy of the settlement right now?
I think we just need to make sure that it can be disclosed.
Oh, okay.
So depending on the stage of the process, because the way the settlement is laid out is that we first had to determine the number of states that would join the settlement. And once it met a threshold, then we would move on to the next stage, which I believe is now the subdivisions within the states and getting them to sign on. And then thereafter, the defendants would then agree to it. And then after that, there's like a formula of how the money will be distributed. So that's why I'm only talking about approximately how much money we can anticipate based on the settlement agreement. But as I said, we anticipate $20 billion, and Guam's share is likely to be approximately $10 million. And since the public hearing, there has been no updates in the litigation, other than how it's progressed through the different phases as required in the settlement agreement.
Madam Speaker, I didn't know where you're coming from, but basically, the panel is saying that for most folks that are seeing litigations until the process is finished, we're never gonna get any settlement.
Are we acting too preliminary here? We're not even able to see a settlement agreement. We can't tell whether the $10 million's gonna come in, you know, all in lump sum or anything. I'm asking if it can just get listed.
You know, I'm sorry, it won't be in lump sum. It'll be distributed in the period of 18 years. How much that will be per year, I think, is, as I said, is based on a formula, so we don't know the exact number at this time, because we're still meeting the terms of the settlement agreement.
And if I may, Senator, there's different tracts too as well. There's a settlement with multiple companies.
Could you just pull that microphone closer?
Oh, sorry. Okay. And Senator, there's multiple tracts too with different companies. And so, for one, for example, one is Purdue, the other is Johnson &amp; Johnson, and the other is the manufacturers. And each tract has a little bit of difference in between how each proceeds. And so, for example, what Ms. Titon said is there's some tracts that are still in different stages that may not be, that may not be public at this point, but other tracts may be, and I think that's something we can provide if it's not confidential at this point.
And what I was gonna say is this legislation is part of the settlement, is setting up a structure by which we would show to the defendants in this case how the money would be distributed and to settle in their mind that these funds would be used for the purposes intended for in the settlement. So this is a step towards meeting the requirements of the settlement agreement.
Can we get a copy of the requirements of the settlement, then? That shows that this is one of the things that is necessary in order to get a settlement?
Yeah, we will just make sure that what we can disclose is not...
And you were saying you're determining right now, I know in other states, they do, the counties, municipals, or municipalities. Are you making any determinations for Guam right now as to other entities that will be affected?
Oh, no, because Guam has no subdivisions, right? It's just Guam, so we're not part of the subdivision count within the other states. And as I said earlier, this legislation mirrors other jurisdictions that have already put this, have passed this type of legislation. And there've been so far a handful. Other states are still trying to get theirs through, and I can't speak to the status of their legislation. But this piece of legislation, again, mirrors other jurisdictions.
I'm hoping that will settle for now, and we'll go ahead and we'll start the questions, because I think at the end of the day, my colleagues, it's all about, it's preliminary until things are settled. But I understand where the speaker's coming from. If we can have something so we can look at and understand more. But this is all in preparation of, once it's settled and everybody understands where we intend to spend the money, the funds, as it comes out. We'll go ahead and we'll begin with Senator Teller. We'll start with you. We're on our first round, my colleagues. The clock will begin when you ask the question, and it will end then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the panel for being here. When you said 18 years, I too was trying to figure that out. Is it 10 million and within 18 years, making it 55,000, I'm sorry, 555,555 per year if you were to divide it? Or is it 10 million every 18 years?
Yeah, we're anticipating 10 million over the 18 period.
Over 18 years, right? So that's about 555...
No, I'm sorry, it's not 10 million each year. It'll be 10 million total.
Right, right, which is...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, spread over 18 years, that's 555,555. It's kind of ironic that it boils out to that amount of money. So you mentioned that you were following some other jurisdictions. What state in particular are you following with regard to the makeup?
So I think Joseph will look that up real quick. But I know that Colorado...
Can you please speak into the mic? I'm sorry, it's so hard for me to hear back here, so.
Sure.
Just speak right into the mic.
I believe it's Colorado, Massachusetts, New York, Texas...
Oklahoma.
And these are the states that you have pulled to find, basically, to assist in crafting this legislation on the requirements, not the requirements, but the makeup of the council, as well as...
Yes, so these jurisdictions have passed legislation. So when we were meeting with other attorney general offices, we had talked about model legislation. And so, they pointed us to these jurisdictions to assist us in crafting legislation with the assistance, of course, of Senator Shelton's office.
Okay, but then you mentioned earlier that you can't provide us some information that you're not...
You know, I don't know what we can provide at this point. I'm sorry, I was just informed this morning about the hearing, so I wasn't able to find out what, whether, at this stage, what we can disclose. I just want to make sure that we don't violate any protective order that was initially put in place during the litigation. But I believe these documents should be able to be, we should be able to disclose it, but I just need to make sure before I do provide that to the legislature. And then we can go through our case file to find out if there's any material in there that we can share with the legislature at this point. And I'm pretty sure we'll be able to find some stuff that we can disclose, if it's not the settlement agreement itself. But the settlement agreement, just so you'll be prepared, is 300-some pages long.
When do we anticipate for all this to come to fruition? I mean, in other words, when do we anticipate this to finally, a ruling being brought down, the funding being distributed, and this going actually into the account of government of Guam? Or the Attorney General's Office?
Yes, so I believe we anticipate funding, if all goes well, according to the phases in the settlement agreement. We can anticipate the first round of funding being dispersed in July of next year.
2022.
Yes, Senator.
That's all the questions I have for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Teller. Senator, do you have any questions for the panel, sir?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to ask primarily, how would you look at, what is the primary focus? I mean, I know it's to create this commission to oversee this, but what is the primary focus? Are you looking at not just educational outreach, but treatment? I mean, what are the key focus and part of the agenda of how this money will be spent? And then the other question I have with the opioid challenges that we have, I mean, we have people getting prescription medication that, you know, may not be properly prescribed to them. I mean, how are people in our community actually getting those type of medications that normally would be prescribed versus other types of illegal drugs that are coming into our community, like crystal methamphetamine? I mean, what's the, and is it increasing? What's leading to it? I mean, how are they getting, how are they actually getting this type of medication, which in most cases are controlled? I mean, I believe physicians have to have special authorization to be able to issue these type of medications. How are they getting into our community?
Yeah, that's a good question, Senator. I think what we intend to do with some of these funds, at least with the initial funding that we received from the McKinsey settlement, is to try and build our data and find out, find out some of the answers to the questions that you're asking us. Unfortunately, Guam hasn't really been able to capture some of this information. So one of the things we do want to do is be able to start capturing this data. And how to do that, we will probably work with the respective agencies to figure out how we can start capturing this data and answering some of these questions. The settlement includes a schedule of how these funds can be used. It's not necessarily exhausted or exclusive. The legislation itself talks about various ways that the monies can be used, which will be determined by the advisory council, which again is made up of stakeholders, which seems like the appropriate people to be involved in how money should go toward abatement, treatment, recovery, maybe even trying to, it's more, I don't even, possibly criminal, but I think the trend is trying to assist these individuals before they even get into the system, and if they are in the system, to try and improve their lives so that they don't revert back to substance abuse. I mean, some of the initial funds that we received, we've entered into agreements with these service providers to help their clients, after they've completed the program, be able to integrate back into regular life on Guam by maybe getting help paying for their driver's license, getting, paying for the fees for anything that they may need as part of a job application. These are things, or even paying outstanding utility bills so that they can try and get a placement in housing, because sometimes that might be an impediment. So we're just trying to do things like that in improving the lives of these individuals so that they can successfully recover from these, from substance abuse. And hopefully, with that, maybe curtail the amount of crime, maybe, that can result from someone addicted or high on drugs.
If I can make a comment about how the medication is not necessarily criminal in nature. Sometimes, and this is the experience in the states with opioid addiction, is someone will slam their hand onto a table or onto a door, and they'll naturally go to a doctor, and the doctor will prescribe an opioid medication. That necessarily isn't taking the drug from someone's pillbox from your neighbor. That's just naturally the course of how they would like to get more medication. Unfortunately, there's instances where the doctors on the island don't necessarily capture that data as far as whether or not this injury is related to an opioid addiction. But a lot of times, this opioid addiction is a gateway to bigger drugs. And so, if there is a bigger drug that's accessible, then a lot of times, the addiction will move on to another drug. And so, it's a little bit difficult to capture that data, and that's what Ms. Titon was saying, is there is a need to expand the education and to expand law enforcement and medical to understand how this drug interplays between other addictive drugs, but also other issues relating to social issues, such as, a lot of times, when people are stressed out, it leads to overtaking medication. And so, it's not necessarily opioid addiction just to get opioids. People have underlying foundational mental issues that's going on in their personal lives that may lead to that addiction. So a lot of this money for abatement is also to expand on that education process and that data collection as well.
Well, I certainly hope, as the speaker requested, you know, when you are able to provide information, just the outline of what the possible course of investment, where the money is going to be used, just to give us a good idea of how that's going to be spent. Because certainly, it's one thing, individuals choosing to harm themselves, but how is this contributing, perhaps, to the other crime issues that are happening in our community that are affecting a lot of innocent people out there? I think it would be good to get a gauge of how this money's going to be invested and how it can best benefit our community with regards to these issues. So thank you very much for responding to my questions, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to ask those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Shelton, no questions. Senator Perez, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, I overheard, maybe there was a bankruptcy court involved in this? Can you just explain that a little bit?
The Purdue case, yeah, is in bankruptcy court, correct.
So the company, the maker of, is it, which company's under bankruptcy?
Purdue.
How would that affect the settlement?
It shouldn't, yeah, I'll have Joseph answer that.
So there are, in the bankruptcy, there was a settlement that was initiated in the bankruptcy after Purdue declared bankruptcy. There are certain parties and interested parties who oppose the settlement agreement. And so, when the judge approved the settlement agreement, they're now appealing that judge's order. And so, that's what I was indicating in the beginning, that some stages of, like, for example, Purdue is still in its bankruptcy litigation process, and it's not, the settlement agreement is not approved, per se, because there's other interested parties who are appealing the judge's approval of that settlement. Some parties have their own purpose for appealing it, but the majority of the states and interested parties that did approve it in the beginning was, I believe, I think, maybe a very, very small minority disagreed with the settlement. I believe, I think, maybe a very, very small minority disagreed with the settlement.
And in regard to the settlement, besides cash, were there practices, also, was there an injunction of the practices that led to a lot of the addictions? So I guess the unfair practices, was that part of the settlement?
Yeah, but even before, I think Joseph answers that question, I just wanted to point out that the Purdue bankruptcy shouldn't delay this piece of legislation, because this piece of legislation would assist in facilitating the distribution of those funds once the bankruptcy case ends. But go ahead.
I'm sorry, Senator, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, and the settlement, besides monetary damages, was there any, like, an injunction of practices that led to addictions?
Yes, yes, so part of, part of what Purdue did was they downplayed the addictive nature of the drug OxyContin, which was their bestselling drug on the market. And that practice has ended, of course, not necessarily through an injunction, but that was just something that was fraudulent in nature. So they ended that criminal and fraudulent practice.
So I imagine it's a whole network, right? It's not just the manufacturers of the drug. But I imagine that, you know, maybe perhaps these doctors' offices too are complicit. Is that one of the findings of the case?
So part of, part of what the doctors have been prescribing is the information that, for example, Purdue has given them. So in reliance of the information that Purdue says, you are allowed, it is allowable to give, for example, not just 10 milligrams of OxyContin, but you can give up to 100 milligrams, which already past 10 would be already addictive in nature. So a lot of doctors relied on that representation from, for example, Purdue in that respect. In regards to being complicit, I think that's a case-by-case basis. But the overall nature scheme of what the drug manufacturers did was giving out misinformation and information to the doctors around the nation that wasn't true.
Okay, so in that case, there would be no further action towards doctors' offices? We're assuming that now that the information is correct, there's no need to go and pursue whether these offices are actually complying? Is that, is that accurate?
Are you saying on a global nature or just on a specific, like a? The way I see it is it would be a case-by-case basis. And I don't think globally, in general, I don't believe that there was a network of doctors that acted fraudulently. But I think it would be on a case-by-case basis. So hopefully that is, answers that, your question on that.
Yeah, I guess that would go in towards the education part. I'm assuming if, you know, for this trust fund council, that would be addressed with the education, I hope.
Yes, I think the legislation does a really good job in setting up the parameters for the advisory council to follow in order to determine how best to allocate these settlement funds.
Senator Perez, you have any more?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, maybe, so one of the drugs, the one that reverses opioid addiction, naloxone, am I saying that correctly? This council would also look at the effectiveness of that? Or how would that be addressed as far as the appropriate treatments?
Well, I believe, yeah, the purchase of more of the naloxones for the island to have available is something that certainly the, this advisory board can consider or council can consider using these proceeds for. I know that we had looked at it also. We spoke to the fire department, as well as to the number of naloxanes that they buy and equip their ambulances with. It didn't seem like a lot, so we weren't really sure whether or not it was, how impactful it would be. But it sounds like it could be. But certainly, again, the makeup of the advisory council would help make that determination.
Yeah, I guess perhaps, I think there is one member that could maybe.
Yes, one of the members, yeah.
Effectiveness of the treatment, that would be the one appointed by the governor, is that correct?
Yes, looking at that, I believe it's a, she, the governor can appoint a direct service provider. And also, the governor can appoint someone with experience with the disorder, whether directly or someone close or a family member. So having that perspective on the advisory council, I think would be very beneficial.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Senator Jim, do you have any question for the panel? Senator Chris, any question for the panel, sir?
This is my seat, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Ms. Titanow and Mr. Perez for being here. As I, as a co-sponsor, of course, and also as I look at the legislation, it looks like the structure is very sound in terms of the makeup. There are very similar organizations within the government of Guam. I think of one of those other issues that we had, consent decree, such as the severely emotional disturbed children and the need to put together a multi-agency task force in order to be able to administer treatment and the like. So this looks a very similar structure, very sensible. I like the idea, Shannon, that to approach this, you would first make sure that one of the charges you looked at as administered from the office of the public, or, excuse me, the Office of Attorney General is to do that a collection, because it seems that would be the sensible approach, to see really where the effects locally are with regard to opioid addiction. Not having to get into the strict numbers or even year by year, I just wanted to maybe get a sense of what the Attorney General's office has been experiencing over the years as you entered into this settlement agreement and the litigation, in terms of the impact based on contacts and maybe caseload with regard to what impact it has had over the years on the Attorney General with related crimes, opioid addiction that has been identified as kind of a, you know, a factor in terms of charges? And perhaps you bringing charges based on that contact with the system?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Senator Duñez. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers for you. I'm not even sure, I mean, I'm, well, no, I shouldn't say that. There might be cases that we have that are opioid-related. And I can certainly see if we do capture that information. And if we do, I'd be happy to share that with you.
Thank you, yeah, because I, I think what we're going to find here in the eventual, hopefully, passage of this legislation is it really is going to be along the lines of a lot of the other programs that we administer in terms of trying to curb substance abuse, which basically is, you know, the typical models are treatment and prevention, of course, particularly at the youth level. So I see a lot of content in here that will allow for this council to be able to, you know, make critical decisions with this, you know, all the multiple disciplines that are involved here. But yeah, so I maybe almost offered that question as something, as you're working through this, and you would more than likely preside over the meetings and the council, and I'd like to start to say, well, here's the law enforcement side of it in terms of the contacts of those who've been coming through the system that when you broke it down and charges came forward, you found that individuals were not just creating or, you know, you know, doing crimes that, that, you know, but that there was that substance abuse nature associated with it. So that establishes the contact with the system, but then working backwards into the other opportunities for treatment and prevention. So I maybe offered that question more as maybe getting a lead on moving forward on this. But I appreciate all the work that the Attorney General's office done. And I think, as I've seen other government structures, it looks pretty performant, really. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Correction, Senator Duñez. I know, I was busy watching Senator Brown back there. Senator Torres, do you have any question, ma'am, for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shannon, Joseph, and Llewellyn, thank you for making yourselves available this afternoon. I just want to comment that I think that the bill is very well-written. I'm very, especially pleased with the way that the opioid recovery advisory council was laid out. I think that that's very reflective of the entities and agencies that deal with people that fall into opioid abuse situations. So I thought that was good. My question is more technical, and I'm just looking for guidance, because as I look to the placement of this new article to Chapter 22, Title V of Guam Code Annotated, I'm seeing, as I look at that particular statute, that there already exists an Article 16 that's called Supplemental Appropriation Revenue Fund. And I'm just wondering, my question is technical in nature, the placement of it. It appears just from going on to the compiler's website that there already exists an Article 16 for opioid prevention and treatment. I don't know what.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Yeah, we can certainly verify that and work with Senator Shelton if we can find, if Article 16 already exists, then maybe we'll find another appropriate substitute to add this chapter to.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to note it, because I was a little confused. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, and if I may, I just want to thank Senator Duñez for his suggestion. I think it's a really great idea. I also know that the service providers that we've met with have indicated that their clients, they're seeing opioid abuse, whether it's combined with other substance abuse. So it is a factor on our island that we are dealing with. So I just want to make that comment for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Titanow. Senator Nelson, do you have any question for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the, in some states, in the settlements, they have provisions where they are also rewarding opioid victims, for those who could prove it. It says that the settlement will be given to people who are harmed by OxyContin, and will each get between $3,500 and $48,000. Guardians of $6,500 of children born with symptoms of opioid withdrawal will receive about $7,000. So are we looking to reward the victims of, for any, for the purpose of the settlement? Or has there been any discussion on that?
Not specifically, but then again, the way this legislation is laid out, this is something that certainly the advisory council can consider and then make the decision going forward in the administration of the proceeds. And I think that that sounds like it's something that can be paid by these funds.
Thank you.
And I appreciate this suggestion, Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Shannon. And then the, you know, I guess it's a little bit difficult, right? If we can't really see the whole case docket of the settlement. And so really, it's challenging to know what questions that we would have.
Sure, the settlement is not very detailed with respect to the expenditure of these funds. It really is just setting forth the agreement that the defendants will pay this money. There is a schedule, again, of, and I think that could be shared, of how these funds could be spent. And of course, that would be useful to the advisory council going forward. It's not exhaustive, it's not exclusive. And things like what you're suggesting, or Senator Duñez is suggesting, and anyone here present at this.
Yes.
Session can certainly present to the advisory council. As a matter of fact, I believe the speaker and the minority leader can appoint members to the advisory council so these suggestions can be represented to the council through the membership.
And so if the advisory council comes up with recommendations on how to invest the money towards rehabilitation or compensating the victims, does the Attorney General's office have the overall say on whether, yes, they would agree with that recommendation or they would proceed in a different manner?
No, I believe, I believe the, unless, of course, it for some reason would violate the settlement, which is pretty broad already, then, the terms of the settlement, then it's, I believe the way the legislation is set up, that the Attorney General would, office would have to administer the funds based on what the council, as, they're kind of considered as trustees, right? And so we would have a fiduciary duty to adhere to the decision of the council in expending these funds, unless, of course, it violates either Guam law, federal law, or the terms of the settlement.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Sorry, Senator, oh, one more thing, too. The Attorney General, and part of the council, the Attorney General or designee shall serve as a non-voting chairman. So that's also a detail.
Thank you, that's good for the public to know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Madam Speaker, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, thank you. Can you just explain, you know, it says that the Office of the Attorney General shall administer the fund in consultation with the advisory council, and that the advisory council shall determine the allocation or expenditures of the fund. Do you see that to be like, so the funds cannot be expended without a vote of this advisory council?
I would say yes, Speaker.
But the money is received by the Attorney General?
It would go into our consumer fund, like any other recovery through the consumer division, any action taken by the consumer division, which this lawsuit stems from. It would go into that fund and only, actually, no, I'm sorry. I think there's going to be a trust fund set up. So the money would go into that trust fund and only be spent for the purposes and the reasons laid out in this piece of legislation. So it wouldn't be commingled with any other funds that our office holds.
All right, and so I was looking in some other jurisdictions, they have two funds set up, not just one. Could you just explain that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure about the two-fund system. I didn't get a chance to compare the other jurisdictions in preparation for today's hearing, so I apologize, Speaker.
Can you explain how, I've seen in these other, some of these other jurisdictions, they make a big deal about, in their legislation, they waive, like, the jurisdiction's right to bring any more cases. But that's not in this bill, is it? Or how is that being, is the Attorney General doing that in the settlement?
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think, well, I'll have Joseph explain that.
I believe that language is at the end of the legislation as a single agency for bringing claims against entities for manufacturing, marketing.
So in other words, no other person can bring an action against them unless it's through our office? And our office is already part of the global settlement?
So because your office is in disagreement agreeing not to bring claims, for example, then us, I was going to ask you also to explain this language. What is the purpose of this language? So that's it, it's to say, in other words, that no one else in Guam can bring a claim against any of these companies, and only the Attorney General, who has now waived or will be waiving in the settlement his right to do that? Are any other jurisdictions currently receiving money?
Not yet.
No.
All right. The, how would you describe the affected communities or the public's input in determining the expenditure of these funds? the expenditure of these funds?
Well, I don't think the advisory committee is precluded from entertaining any suggestions that the public may have, and maybe that's something we can consider in setting up to allow the public to make suggestions for the advisory council to consider. Did you have something to add?
Is there a requirement in the settlement that the, or that affected communities' input be sought?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question, Speaker?
Is there a requirement in the settlement that the input of affected communities be sought in order, towards, in the expenditure of the funds?
No, no. Like I said, it's pretty, the settlement is pretty broad and flexible. It's more the requirements of, in this, right now, what we have are the distributors that are part of the settlement, that we can anticipate receiving proceeds as early as next summer, that they have obligations to meet in the settlement.
Do you, can you tell from this legislation whether any part of that trust fund is intended to be invested, and that, you know, the expenditure would be limited to the interest, or do you, is it intended that they're going to spend the principal?
I didn't see anything in here, I believe, that would use the funds for any type of investment that you're identifying or asking about. And then, wait, I'm sorry.
But, Shannon, if I may, a lot of the opioid addictions is something that we would like to address, or other types of associated addiction, addictive behavior would be something we'd like to address now. So if there's an investment, I do think that takes a lot more time to build, and of course, the committee would, I mean, not the committee, but the opioid trust group would just make that decision, but it's something to address. I believe the money would be more useful to be addressed directly, as opposed to investing it and using the profits at a later time.
Yeah, if you're talking about financing, like what we do with other projects...
With the tobacco settlement proceeds.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't, the authorization here, or the structure set up here, doesn't specifically lay that out, but I don't think it's necessarily precluded from, should the advisory council decide that that might be a prudent use of the funds, similar to tobacco. Now, with that, whether that's going to require further legislation, I think our office would probably have to review that.
All right. And so the Attorney General issued a press release on October 11th specifying how the first installment of $231,000 would be spent, and I'm curious about that, because at that time, this bill had not been passed, it's still not passed, but he's saying that $115,000 is going towards additional staff for a substance abuse treatment program at Department of Corrections, $16,000 to assist direct service providers and programs, $60,000 for toxicology testing to gather more data on the prevalence of opioids and other illicit drugs, and $40,000 to develop an educational outreach and prevention campaign. So is this the same settlement proceeds that we're talking about? It says McKinsey and Company.
That's the McKinsey settlement. So because that action was, again, pursued by our Consumer Protection Division, the proceeds of that settlement was deposited into the consumer account and used for the purposes laid out in that settlement.
So what is that settlement? How, that settlement did not require legislative authority?
No.
Because the AG brought the suit, they put all the money into their, into their account, and is able now to spend it however they want.
Yeah, we can provide you with a consent, so in the McKinsey lawsuit, we had to file a complaint in Superior Court, and then we also filed a consent judgment, and we can certainly provide that to you, because that's public documents. This, what this structure does is, is set up a structure and a means by which stakeholders will be involved in the allocation of these millions of dollars that we anticipate coming into the island for opioid treatment. The, the McKinsey, it, we're not necessarily, we're not asking for an appropriation of these funds, but again, setting up a structure to facilitate the use of these proceeds. The, as I said, the McKinsey went into our consumer existing statute and the settlement, or the consent judgment in that case specifically, lays out how those monies will be spent, and as you mentioned from the press release, they were used for services related to opioid use.
Without this bill, how would the monies be spent?
We would probably do it the same way. We would follow the schedule laid out in the settlement agreement, which is pretty much similar to what's here. We, we would like to get it actually codified, so that going forward, there wouldn't be any issue with consistency and meeting the intent of this bill, and then that's why we would like to get it codified, otherwise, it would, we would just follow, we would try to, we would spend it according to the settlement. This way, you get the stakeholders involved in knowing what the settlement lays out, what the settlement suggests you could use the money for, and having the stakeholders actually prioritize or identify what those services would be, versus just the Attorney General's office.
So you're saying that without this bill, the Attorney General would have been putting the money into his account? That's not what I see in the other states. They all talk about legislative authority over these funds.
Well, it's part of the agreement, the settlement agreement, again, we all agree to have legislation passed, and so that's what we're trying to do here, is get legislation passed as part of the settlement agreement, as part of the settlement agreement going forward with the distributors, which is the global settlement. McKinsey came, is a separate lawsuit that was settled before this global settlement, which the global settlement speaks of this legislation being passed for, it's really for the defendants in the case, knowing that there's something in the law that shows how the money will be spent.
It's also to authorize someone other than the legislature to have jurisdiction over funds, which normally is the purview of the legislature, and that's what, that's what happened in the tobacco settlement, right? And that's what I'm seeing in some of these other jurisdictions. So they're very specifically, you know, delegating that authority to another entity and clarifying, you know, whether that entity is really going to decide, or how much of it's going to decide versus the other, you know, or keep some discretion in other capacities. Yeah, I'm seeing some, some of the commissions that are established are literally the governor, the senators, you know, and maybe behavioral health, right? And this one, yeah, it does add representatives from the governor, maybe. I wanted to ask you to describe, like, the mayor's representative, you're very specific as to, you want a specific representative from the mayor? Could you describe that qualification, that's, is that necessary?
That'll be your last question, and we'll go to the next round. Senator, I mean, Ms. Taitino, do you have any response to that?
Oh, yeah, I was just looking up the section of the mayor's appointees. So the mayor, mayor's council can appoint one member qualified by experience with opioid use disorder, either, again, firsthand or as a family member.
Okay. Now, my colleagues, we're now going to the second round?
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'm asking them to explain that. I had asked them to explain. So I'm sorry, could you repeat, what exactly did you need me to explain, like?
Explain why that qualification, why...
I think the idea is to have that perspective be part of the membership, so knowing, having various members in the community that have first, have personally experienced someone, whether it's themselves or someone in their family having substance abuse, maybe be able to contribute to the discussion on how best to use, on how best to spend these proceeds, because they've lived it, and so they, they'll be able to contribute, again, to discussion based on their perspective. I think that would, as I mentioned earlier, beneficial to the, to the group as a whole.
I can understand that for members, maybe public members, but for the mayors, because, you know, mayors have a different role in the community there, I would think.
I think, I think it allows them to appoint someone, and not necessarily, if the mayor, if the mayor's council decides to put in a mayor, as long as the mayor, a mayor meets this description, I, it seems to allow for that, but I think because they are close to the constituents that live within their municipality, that they may be able to identify someone appropriate to serve on the council.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Madam Speaker?
I would move to recess until tomorrow, so we can get the documents from the Attorney General's office and...
Sounds good. I was, there are no objections, we'll recess until...
Wait, tomorrow's a holiday, so I mean...
Oh, correction, until Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, I was about to ask that before we move on. Other than the documents that the Speaker's asking, is there any other information any of my colleagues need, so that we can bring, I don't want them to come back and then we still have a bunch of, just keep dragging it.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Okay, so, Madam Speaker, do you have anything else that you want to ask from the AG's office, so that, we want to make sure they come back and not have to go back and come back again. Do one shot, one kill. Anything else you would like to ask them, that you...
Yes, are you saying we're going to ask before we get the documents?
No, 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 any documents you may want me, other than just that, is that the only thing?
Oh, I see.
Is there anything else in addition to what the Speaker's asked? Okay, we'll wait until Thursday.
Maybe the legislation from the states that they've referred to, yes.
Yes, okay. That being said, Ms. Taitino, Mr. Perez, if we can bring copies of other legislation that exists in other states, so we can give a good example, and everybody can digest that. All right? That being said, it's 5:15, we'll see you all 9 o'clock on Thursday morning. Thank you. We're in recess.